Thank you kindly for joining us on the I Love Seaville Show. It's great to be with you on a glorious and gorgeous afternoon in downtown Charlottesville. Lots to cover on the program. Take a look at the screen for today's headlines. We'll talk breakfast biscuits. We'll talk Thai food and a friend of the program who's expanding her restaurant empire. We were very fortunate to be a part of that transaction in a small way. I've so been so eager to want to announce the news of what Kit Ashy has cooking, pun intended, but I wanted to hold off as someone that was a part of making that transaction happen. So she could get the news out herself. And now we have those details which we will cover today on the program. Also on today's show, we'll talk about the Rivanna River Company buying the Sugar Bear Building. I found out about this on Tuesday during the interview with Bo Carrington, the principal of Seven Development. If you guys want a fantastic interview, check out the one we did on Tuesday with Mr. Bo Carrington, a local boy, a talented lacrosse player that graduated from the Covenant School, played lacrosse at Duke, also got an MBA at the Darden School here in the University of Virginia, now raising five children with his beautiful wife in Ivy, Virginia, and making a development push in a community where development is difficult, but he's doing it the right way. We'll talk the Virginia School Board Member Alliance follow-up. Man, it really, the OCD anal perfectionist in me really hates that the P is cut off in that headline.
Let me see if I can...
Perhaps we could say Virginia School Board Member Alliance follow... dot, dot, dot. I'm such an OCD guy that just, it's making my skin crawl. Oh, that is better. Thank you very much, Judah Wickauer. We'll talk about the Central Virginia Taylor Swifties that are gobbling up Airbnb bookings. Judah Wickauer, this is his story, one that he's going to provide for you, the viewer and listener. Evidently, Swifties from Charlottesville and Almarle County are traveling across the pond. And I'm not talking about, was it Lake Anna where you get E. coli?
Apparently.
I'm not talking about that pond. I'm talking about the Atlantic Ocean, traveling to Europe to follow Taylor Swift, gobbling up Airbnb rentals left and right. The lion share of Swifties traveling with Taylor in Europe and gobbling up these Airbnbs from Almarle County and the city of Charlottesville. This is an interesting story, one that we'll try to unpack on today's show. Roots Natural Kitchen, perhaps you've tried it on the UVA Corner. It's a fantastic spot. Roots Natural Kitchen on the down-low is one of the most impressive success stories when it comes to restaurants in Charlottesville and Central Virginia history. I'm going to say that again. Roots Natural Kitchen, the salad bowls on the UVA Corner, a brand founded by two UVA graduates that started in Charlottesville on the corner, is one of the most successful restaurants in Charlottesville or Central Virginia history. They're opening their third location in the Richmond area. Roots has 13 total locations now. A brand started in Charlottesville. We'll unpack that on today's program. On today's show, ladies and gentlemen, we will highlight Kit Ashy, friend of the program, opening her fifth Thai eatery. A six is on the near horizon as well. On today's program, ladies and gentlemen, we will talk about the Rivanna River Company buying the Sugar Bear Building, and maybe we'll chitter chatter about Bel Air Market breakfast biscuits. Judah, I can't wait for you to try one. I've had three this week alone. And Ryan Dunn, picked by the Phoenix Suns in the first round of the NBA draft. A lot we're going to cover on the show. We are off tomorrow. I'd like to give you a heads up. Jenny Who's watching the program. We love you, Jenny Who. We're off tomorrow. We're going to miss you guys, but we'll be back in the saddle on Monday. And Real Talk with Keith Smith will be live tomorrow with the fantastic roundtable at 10:15 a.m. Let's weave Judah Wickauer in on a two-shot. Let's put the second lower third as a headline on screen, the Virginia School Board Member Alliance follow-up. I want to spend a couple of minutes talking about the interview we did yesterday. That interview was with Shelley Norden of the Virginia School Board Member Alliance, and we also had the pleasure of interviewing one of the Orange County School Board members. Her name was Darlene Dawson, and we talked about an alliance that will rival or challenge or offer an alternative option to the Virginia School Board Association. The Virginia School Board Member Alliance is different from the Virginia School Board Association in that the Virginia School Board Member Alliance, the new one, is targeting individual members as opposed to school boards in totality.
Yeah.
And they bill themselves, they promote themselves, they brand themselves as a politically neutral organization that is focused solely on keeping kids safe and improving academic achievement.
And, and providing, providing teachers and, well, specifically, school board members with the tools that they need to, you know, to do their job correctly and not just, and not just rubber stamp everything that, that comes, you know, in front of their desks.
Exactly. So this seems pretty legitimate to me.
Yeah, definitely.
They, they are early on, but they're gaining market share quickly. So the whole premise of the show was an introduction to an organization that is a year and change old, that is trying to stay politically neutral, that is servicing individual members as opposed to school boards in totality.
Yeah. They also leave out, they also leave out the...
Superintendent.
Yeah, superintendent. So they're, you know, they do their own thing.
I think we may see this organization, a nonprofit, gain some significant momentum very quickly.
I definitely wouldn't be surprised.
And I'm curious to see how this is going to impact the migration patterns of teachers themselves, whether some choose to work for school systems that are a part of the School Board Member Alliance or the Virginia School Board Association.
Yeah.
Very curious to see how this influences school board races politically in the future. This should be a question. Which organization do you think your school board or you personally should be a part of?
And the, and the two of them don't necessarily, can't necessarily, can coexist because one is for, one is for the entire school board, one is for individuals on school boards. So I, I find it, I find it unlikely that most school boards will choose both. I feel like members of school boards that are going to choose to join the SBMA will...
The new one.
Will likely vote to take their school board off of, off of the old one.
To no longer pay dues to the Virginia School Board Association, 100%. We saw that with Orange County.
Yeah. But that's, that doesn't have to be the case. And yeah, I'm curious, I'm, I'm also curious how this will, will change things. I could definitely see teachers deciding that, you know, I would rather be in a place where, where the school board has, you know, has their own thoughts. They're not just rubber stamping everything. And, and like you said, I can also see, see this coming up in races where parents are asking that question. Where do you stand? Are you just gonna, are you just gonna go along with whatever the superintendent wants to do with the school? Or do you think independently and, and come to your own conclusions? And I think that was, I think that was explained very well by, by both of the, the women that were, that were on yesterday.
Well, son. Nicely done, Judah. Listen to the interview. Wherever you get your podcasts and content, just look for the I Love Seaville Show. Jenny Who said she loved the interview and she's excited to see more of their results. She said she'll miss us tomorrow and thanks for letting us know. We appreciate you, Jenny Who. I want to close the first topic with this. The folks that are on school boards, their job is to hold the superintendents accountable. And you can be a champion of the school system you represent, the taxpayers you represent, and the students you represent. You can be their cheerleader, cheerleader and champion while also still holding them accountable.
Definitely.
A perfect example of that is a head coach. A head coach of any sports team, Tony Bennett, Brian O'Connor, they hold their players accountable and demand the best versions of themselves every day. They offer constructive criticism. They occasionally hold them accountable with punishment, running laps or benching them. But when it's all said and done, Tony Bennett and Brian O'Connor want their players to succeed on and off the court or diamond and succeed in life from a personal standpoint. So far, what we've had in Almarle County, in particular in Almarle County, is elected officials on the school board that are choosing nothing but rubber stamping or green lighting with Dr. Matthew Haas once, from a budget standpoint, a policy standpoint, a diversity, equity and inclusion standpoint, hiring consultants standpoint, rebranding and renaming standpoint.
Yeah.
It's time we get a little pushback. And what really resonated with me, then you closed the topic, was Darlene Dawson, the Orange County School Board member yesterday.
This is maybe what I'm thinking of.
When she said the pyramid of representation, number one, we first represent...
The parents should be at, the parents and the students should be at the top, and then should be the teachers, and then the school board, and then the superintendent.
I think she said taxpayers are number one.
That, you're probably right.
Taxpayers one, because the taxpayers are what's funding the school.
Yeah.
That's who school board members represent first. Number two, it's the students and the parents. The parents are taxpayers there.
Yeah.
Number three, it's the teachers, the support staff. And number four, and who they represent is the superintendent and his or her cabinet and agenda.
Yeah.
That resonated with me.
Yeah, definitely. No doubt.
We'll get the second headline, my friend, on screen. In fact, you set the stage with the second headline. Viewers and listeners, let us know your thoughts. Stephanie Wells-Rodes, friend of the program, said her daughter Corinne was invited to go to London to see Taylor Swift when she was 17 years old. And she said, hey, albums are back in. My niece collects them and has a record player. Well, there you go, Judah.
Yeah.
Perhaps I should get you a Taylor Swift record.
I recently saw that some band had come out with the, the first, or I don't know if it's the first, but they'd come out with a, a record, an actual record. I know a lot of people don't remember what they look like, but it's made 100% out of recycled plastic from, you know, those, those machines that sweep rivers and oceans of, of waste. So...
Do you have a record player, Judah?
No.
Do you have a CD player, Judah?
Uh, yeah, in my car.
Okay, there you go.
And I've got lots of CDs.
Lots of CDs?
Yeah.
Okay.
I do still have some of my old tapes. I don't know how many...
Do you have a tape player?
I don't know if it still works, but yeah, I've got this old, well, it's, a lot of people wouldn't consider it much of a dinosaur, but considering the fact that I probably bought it 35 or so years ago, it's, it's pretty old.
Was it a Walkman?
No, no, it was a, it was, like I said, a Monstrous. Actually, you know what? I believe it has a record player on the top of it. I've just...
What? Your Walkman has a record player?
I, I never said, you're the one that said Walkman. That would be pretty wild, though.
How would that work?
Get this big old thing, like...
Like we use it with the boombox on our shoulders?
Yeah, you just like sling it over your back, hope that the record doesn't skip.
Second headline, Judah Wickauer. Your own, Judah, give Judah Wickauer some props on his fresh haircut, viewers and listeners. He's looking sharp with that haircut. Is he on? I think it's fantastic.
I'm glad I didn't muck slop, slop, slop it up.
That's a good joke.
Thank you.
What's your second headline?
Uh, that was the second headline.
The Swifties?
No, 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 the one that we just did.
Okay, sorry. What's the next headline, I should say?
Uh, the next headline...
First headline is we're off tomorrow. Oh, yeah. I learned this in the Bo Carrington interview.
Next headline is Rivanna.
The Rivanna. Bo Carrington was our guest on Tuesday. I thought that interview was fantastic.
Oh, he was great.
Sherry Wilcomb, welcome to the program. One of the things that kind of was in the interview, there's Sean Tubbs on the Market Street cam.
Oh.
Have we got him?
No, I don't even think I have it.
The elusive Sean Tubbs is in town. He's on the Market Street cam. Bo Carrington of Seven Development was on the show. If you like development and real estate, Neil Williamson's watching the program. You would love the show from Tuesday, President of the Free Enterprise Forum, Neil Williamson. He offered back, you know, backroom perspective of, of what transpired with the East High Street Development Project, the Wendell Wood deal, and the dynamics with the city of Charlottesville, his company and Wendell Wood, a piece of property that was going to be 200 and some apartments, that is now going to be converted into a park, has been converted into the park and the process of being converted to a park. He offered perspective never heard on Tuesday's show. Over the course of that one-hour interview with Bo Carrington, the local boy who's raising now five kids with his beautiful wife in Ivy, Virginia, he highlighted that he no longer owns the Double Horseshoe Saloon Building. He purchased the Double Horseshoe Saloon Building in kind of an assemblage-type strategy, and that was, I believe, going to be an entry or a gateway to his apartment complex development on the banks of the Rivanna River. He needed that as in, you know, a piece of the puzzle, if you may. Because that project is no, no longer viable, no longer realistic, he doesn't necessarily need to own a rehabbed bar that is now a gourmet ice cream parlor, Sugar Bear. As a result, he kind of said this on the down-low and in passing, he highlighted, it was on the record in the microphone on camera, so I'm not speaking out of turn here, that the Rivanna River Company has now purchased the Sugar Bear Building. The Rivanna River Company has purchased 1522 East High Street. A quick glimpse at the Charlottesville GIS show Sonia and Gabriel Silver, the owners of the Rivanna River Company, as the new owners of this building. They purchased it for $685,000 in May of this year. This speaks to Mr. Carrington's character right here. Bo Carrington, I hope you hear this. I thought you were sensational on the show. Bo Carrington purchased, according to the Charlottesville GIS, Judah, this speaks to his character. You're gonna, you, you of all will appreciate this.
Okay.
The capitalist in me is slightly surprised by this. Mr. Carrington purchased this in February of 2023, February 24th, 2023, for $685,000 through an LLC. He then sold it a year and change later, 13 months later, 14 months later, May 9th, 2024, for $685,000, the same amount he purchased it for.
Hmm.
The new owners are a couple that live in the city on Chesapeake that are committed to not only beautifying the Rivanna River, not only improving the Rivanna River, not only socially and monetizing the Rivanna River, socially I mean, doing it in a, in a way that's, their footprint makes the, that area better than when they first arrived.
Yeah.
A social entrepreneur.
They're not going to build something and start dumping trash in the river.
So this was Mr. Carrington negotiating in good faith, selling the Sugar Bear Building to people that want to call the Rivanna River their home for business and live around the corner on Chesapeake Street.
Yeah.
This speaks to Bo Carrington's character, and it speaks to the statement that I made throughout the week and oftentimes on the show. We want development projects done in our community in Charlottesville and Almarle and across Central Virginia that are done by local people that live within the community.
Yeah.
Bo Carrington's fantastic. Chris Henry's another guy that's fantastic. These guys, Chris Henry went when he was doing Phase Three of Dairy Market. He went into a church, into a proverbial firing squad where he was lambasted by the 10th and Page neighborhood about this apartment complex that he was going to build on an asphalt parking lot in the place of a ramshackle laundromat in a dilapidated used car lot.
Yeah.
He listened to the 10th and Page community, and they said, we don't want this. All you're doing is gentrifying our home. And he said, all right, I'll pump the brakes and pause.
Yeah, that was a shame.
It was an incredible shame. What the community doesn't realize is by, there goes Bill Nichman, mentor to the program over there, one of the largest property owners in Charlottesville, owns a farm in Almarle County, mentor to yours truly, Bill Nichman, owns the professional center on the downtown mall. Introduce me to the Zinise right there. What the 10th and Page community does not realize...
He would be taking pressure off of them because people would be, people would be buying up the new, the new spaces rather than looking at the 10th and Page area to buy houses in a, in an environment where there's very little for sale.
God damn, son. That was beautifully said, and even more succinct than I could say. Can you go to the studio camera? I haven't given you a flying chest bump in a long while. Studio camera with a flying chest bump. That was beautiful. That was absolutely beautiful.
I don't know if they can see us.
That was excellent. That's exactly right. By bringing in the additional supply, Phase Three Dairy Market to market, to, to the community online, it increases supply, which means in a fluent demographic is not targeting the 10th and Page houses that need some TLC as much.
Yeah.
By keeping them offline, 10th and Page, Fifeville, Star Hill, parts of Belmont and Woolen Mills are going to be targeted even more.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we're going to have, we're going to have a shortage no matter what, but having a little more, I mean, I mean, that's kind of the entire point of the, of the zoning change, right? Is so we can make more housing.
That's the entire point. And this is the point. Deep Throat's watching the program. John Blair's watching the program. Mega Property Holder and talented real estate agent Gary Palmer is watching the program, the principal of town, Neil Williamson, Donna Price, hello. Katie Pearl, hello. She's in the game with the game we call real estate. Peter Krabs of the Pinmont Environmental Council, Capas Chico. Seth Liski, the Stantoni in real estate investor who now lives in Ivy, watching the program. What's up, Seth? Hope you're doing well. Got a lot of heavy hitters watching the program. Deep Throat, a heavy hitter watching the program. He says, first, vinyl now outsells CDs two to one.
Vinyl now outsells CDs. Wow. I mean, I can see that. There are some passionate vinyl owners and collectors out there.
He then says Sean Tubbs is surely heading to the White versus Charlottesville hearing today, 1 p.m. your time. Very, very most likely, Deep Throat. He's highlighted, John, John's highlighted this. I've tried to really highlight this. The whole concept of this new zoning ordinance, the upzoning, is what Judah said. The more supply in the market will stabilize prices. The activist community, the activist community and the urbanist, and the urban lobbying group, Livable Charlottesville, pushed upzoning through. They got in the ear of council and pushed it through over years. They said, we need more supply.
Yeah.
But when that supply comes on the banks of the Rivanna River, or it comes within steps of a historically African-American neighborhood, 10th and Page, or if it comes in the Jefferson Park Avenue, or if it comes on Ivy Road at the site of the Truist Bank location, those same people throw their hands in the air, they grab their megaphones and scream, no way you can't do that. It's hypocrisy.
I, it's insanity. I...
It's insanity.
I don't know. I, I, sometimes I don't know if it's, if it's just a lack of, of what? Self-reflection?
You're going to have to unpack that for me some more. Bob Shata, welcome to the program. Kevin Yancy, we'll get to your, your, your comments in a matter of moments.
I mean, when somebody gives you or attempts to give you something that you've been asking for, that you want, and you get angry, there's got to be some disconnect there. There's got, I mean, I, how do you, how do you explain the, the lack of self-reflection? Do you, did you really want that? Or are you just saying you wanted it, and then when somebody tries to provide it, you, you know, I, I don't, I don't get it. Maybe one of our viewers can explain it.
Correction, Stephanie, sorry, I misread your text, your comment. Her niece is 17 years old and has a record player. Corinne, her daughter, beautiful daughter, who's a teacher, has two children, was asked this year to see Taylor Swift. Corinne is, is very much an adult, a teacher in Louisiana County Public Schools, if memory serves correct. It's, it's, it's basically this, and this is extremely unfortunate, and I'm going to catch flak for saying this. The upzoning and density activists, the upzoning and density advocates, advocates, want to see the upzoning and the density done in neighborhoods that are historically single-family detached, affluent and wealthy. They want to see them done in those locations. The reality is, and this is basic business common sense, it's not going to happen there.
No.
Because why?
First of all...
Very, very straightforward answer.
Well, I don't have a very straightforward answer.
You do have, you know this. Why is it not going to happen there?
Well, I can think of, one reason would be that who's going to buy like a 1.5 million home and tear it down to build, you know, to build an apartment complex?
There it is. Flying chest bumps around. I missed a new record the second time. You just said it distinctly better than me. Are we on the studio camera?
Damn it.
We got, damn it, you got it right. That was fantastic. Oh, that was so good. That's exactly what it is. That's exactly what it is. It's too expensive.
Yeah.
That's why the prediction with this $835,000, 303 Alderman Road purchased by the builder, local builder, was it Evergreen? That's not going to be density.
Yeah.
Let's see what happens. I think we all should watch it. It's going to be a Tony and Posh, million four, million five, million six listing that's going to come on market after they put a quarter million dollars into it.
Yeah.
And the only thing that happened with that listing was the agent, who did a hell of a job representing his client, marketed it for its upzoning potential, which raised, increased the acquisition price.
Yeah.
The opportunity to do something there made the $835,000, it was more expensive than it probably should have been. Because you're looking at an 1,800 square foot rancher that might be a teardown.
Yeah.
You, you, you may have gotten an $835,000 teardown 1,800 square foot rancher. It's a bit of a stretch. Builders can rehab houses undoubtedly, but...
That's a lot of money just for the land.
Bingo. A lot of money just for the land and a house that lipstick on the peg is not going to do enough.
That you've got to spend money tearing down.
There it is. God, Judah's on point. Can you be like this every day?
I don't know. No, I can't.
Why can't you be like this every day?
Because you're not always as, as peppy and friendly.
I am peppy and friendly.
No, sometimes you're a little, sometimes you're a little adversarial.
Okay. So you're saying it's not you, it's me?
I'm saying it's both of us.
It's not you, it's me?
I respond to, to your, to your moods.
Can't you just fake it?
Yeah, but nobody wants to see my fake smile.
Kevin Yancy watching the program. Mr. Yancy says, I beg to differ. Once built, the market value will drastically increase 10th and Page area assessed values. He's, you're saying Phase Three Dairy Market, Mr. Yancy? If that had come online, would have drastically increased the assessed values of 10th and Page? Perhaps. But what Mr. Henry was building was an apartment tower. He was not building single-family detached houses that were direct comps to the single-family detached houses in 10th and Page.
And even if that's true, isn't the balance to that statement, the fact that more housing is likely to bring down property values overall?
Assessments have to be done by current market value. Your statement is rooted in this. If we have more houses, then there's more rooftops to tax. And if there's more rooftops to tax, that's going to alleviate the tax burden on the rooftops in the city.
No, it has less to do with the, with the tax assessment and more to do with the fact that, what is it, comps? So like if, if there's more housing overall, then people aren't raising, people aren't pushing the prices of houses up when they, when they go looking to buy or when they're trying to sell. And so eventually, the tax burden lowers because the assessments aren't going up as much because... aren't going up as much because houses are, start selling for less as there's more availability. If that makes any sense. And I know it was less succinct.
That was not as succinct. That one, I, I'm even confused with that one.
Oh, come on. You know what I'm talking about.
You wanna try it again?
Part of the reason that, that the price of houses goes up is because there's not a lot of availability. If there's more availability, the price of houses will start dropping. In theory, right?
But resale value and assessments are two different things.
Yeah.
Assessments have to be done on market value.
Yes, but once enough houses start selling for less, market value is going to go down, is it not?
Potentially, potentially, potentially.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's gonna be, I'm not saying, saying it's gonna be right away.
Yeah, potentially. The, the devil's advocate or the counter to that statement is, um, population increase, high demand area to live, influence of Charlottesville expanding, impact of Charlottesville increasing enrollment with students, which further cannibalizes more houses, hybrid remote work, the fact that hybrid remote work is hugely, uh, significant in this area. Bloomberg said, what, we were top twenty nationally hybrid remote work markets in the country.
Yeah.
Uh, so I, I don't see that really having, you know, an impact. But I, on paper, I see your point, on paper.
But again, but again, isn't getting back to the, to the new zoning rules, isn't that to bring down the cost of housing?
The new zoning rules are rooted in increased supply will stabilize prices because people have more to choose from and to buy.
Right.
Yeah. Stabilize resale prices. I just, we're not gonna see that happening.
Right.
Yeah.
But technically speaking.
On paper, on paper, yes. John Blair says, his photo on screen, number two in the family. He says, it's great to see a local business doing well. I hope that Sugar Bear and Rivanna River continue to prosper. That little, amen, John Blair, and I'm gonna get to your second comment here as well, John Blair. That little corridor where you got Hogwaller Brewing Company, you got Sugar Bear.
I'm putting some Sugar Bear ice cream on the screen.
Gourmet ice cream. You've been?
Oh, it's delicious.
It's delicious. It's delicious.
And they have color changing spoons.
I know, you love the color changing.
And they gave me treats for Liza.
The things that appeal to the very, uh, likable and affable Judah Wickauer right there.
And I got to watch kids, they've got this cool.
That is your picture right there.
Yeah. And they got the, these, this cool dartboard out, out on the side on the, on the wall. That's like, uh, it's for kids. It's got all these, you know, the, they've got, I saw a kid with, uh, with a little, um, like tomahawk.
Tomahawk?
Yeah, it was just like a flat tomahawk and you, and, and they, I think he also had some throwing stars. They were like big and goofy and flat. And you chuck them and the dartboard has all these, you know, these little plastic, these rubber, uh, I don't know what you call them, things sticking out of them. So they catch the, uh, they catch the, the axes and the throwing stars and it looked like a lot of fun.
Ladies, how can you not like this guy, ladies? Let's, let's, maybe this is a goal by the end of the year. This, this, single and ready to mingle, ladies. This guy would make a fantastic partner right here. Fantastic partner.
Thank you.
Mr. Blair also says this, Jerry, I would add this to you and Judah's excellent analysis. Density is really only desirable when it is close to walkable amenities.
Yeah.
Density does not locate in single-family areas like Greenbrier or Lewis Mountain. Where exactly can you walk to in five minutes or less? Not the downtown mall, not Preston. It's a great point.
Right.
It's a great point. Well done, John Blair. You're, always make the program better. Um, if we see 303 Alderman Road turn into a 1.4, 1.5, 1.6 million dollar listing after they're done remodeling it, and that's the pass, the path of least resistance for the buyer, the path of less friction. If that's what we see happening, then we can point to that exact transaction where the upzoning made the acquisition more expensive and nothing more.
Yeah.
Hear me what I said, folks. Kevin Yancy, he says this, if a new house is built across the street from a sixty-year-old home at Charlottesville market rate, that will drive that house value. I, I understand your, I understand your point, Kevin Yancy, Kevin Yancy. You, you make a fair point. My point is also that Mr. Henry was building apartments and it's not a direct comp assessment wise to the houses in Tenth and Page. And to Judah's point, which I thought was very beautifully said, the folks that would have lived in the 2,000, 2,500, 2,600 a month apartments and Tenth and Page face, or Dairy Market Phase Three, those folks, because they don't have that apartment tower or the apartment tower down by the river.
They may end up buying up.
Those folks are gonna buy Tenth and Page houses. And they're gonna buy them and they're gonna rehab them. And then that's what's really gonna gentrify the neighborhood.
Yeah, you wanna see the prices go up.
You wanna see what's gentrifies that neighborhood quickly, much quicker than Chris Henry's Phase Three Dairy Market. Drive down Tenth Street and look at those colorful houses on Tenth Street in between where Peloton Station used to be located, where Guajeros is located now, and Preston Road. There's like half a dozen or a dozen colorful houses that stand out in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
That are five, six, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollar houses. Those gentrify the neighborhood much faster than an apartment tower.
Yeah.
Dotting the i's and crossing the t's. The Bo Carrington interview, wherever you get your podcasting content. I appreciated Mr. Carrington's, Bo's, um, candor. I appreciated his like willingness to speak freely and, and, and just authentically.
Yeah.
I, I, he, he was, he was excellent. I hope to have him back. And I like to utilize the, uh, the, you know, the, some of the folks that I'm chatting with or hanging out with or grabbing beers with as future guests on the show, um, that are developers locally. Um, I think it would be interesting for viewers and listeners to hear the challenges and how difficult it is to bring stuff to market. They're stigmatized, um, as, as wealthy, greedy, and solely focused on balance sheets and as many doors, um, tenants and doors as possible, tenants and toilets as possible. The reality is the carrying costs and the risk and the, the runway or the, the length of getting paid is just the type of work that very few people would do.
Yeah.
Um, this from Deep Throat. There are some people who push, uh, the new zoning ordinance because they really believe in zoning, uh, mediated supply restriction. But many of the activists supported it as a form of revenge against what Deep Throat says, what white wealthy neighborhoods. He says they had some fantasy that someone is going to build a not-so-great house next to some of the wealthiest people in this community, which just is not gonna happen. And he also said, his favorite objection to DM three was from an employee of LAJC who said it shouldn't go through because our clients, they already have to park. I don't understand that comment. That last one, Deep Throat. Um, appreciate your comments, though. Yes, Kevin Yancy, those colorful homes on Tenth Page are at least a decade old. That's a hundred percent correct. And when those colorful houses came to market on Tenth and Page, and it was probably more than a decade old, they came into a market where Tenth and Page was not nearly as gentrified. So the folks that remodeled or built those colorful houses on Tenth Street had a Tenth and Page neighborhood that is very different than the Tenth and Page neighborhood that we know now. Uh, Ian Davey on Twitter says, what's the latest on the Fry Springs, uh, Marie Bett? Well, we cover that news. First, first to, uh, break that news. You wanna let them know what's coming to Maury Avenue?
Oh, can I remember the name? Miss Spur.
I think he's trying to, he's trying to jab me, Ian Davey there on threads. He's trying to zig me there. All we reported on this talk show was the team behind Marie Bett was gonna open a breakfast, coffee, and pastry shop on Maury Avenue. That's what we reported. And what are they opening on Maury Avenue?
I, what, exactly what you said.
What, what is it?
It's a donut place.
A breakfast, coffee, and pastry shop. And it's the team behind Marie Bett. There we go. Um, all right, my friend, the next headline, if you could, uh, let us know.
Next headline is all about, uh, the Central Virginia Swifties. Um, I'm not, uh, as we, as we've already, uh, covered, I'm not a, uh, a Swifty fan. But, uh, we could certainly use the kind of money that, uh, that a Taylor Swift concert brings to pretty much any area. And, um, it's pretty insane. I think, uh, apparently Crozet is, Crozet is first, and I think Charlottesville is sixth in, uh, in Airbnb rentals in Europe right now because of the Taylor Swift, uh, era's tour, which is kind of insane.
That's bananas.
Yeah.
Give the stat again?
Crozet, I believe, is first, and Charlottesville is sixth in Airbnb rentals in Europe right now for, for the, uh, for the Taylor Swift tour.
Bananas.
Who would have thought?
Were that, there, were there that many Swifties in Charlottesville, Alamo County? Did you know that?
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have any idea or way to know that.
Okay, that's the first thing that stands out to me. How many, I'm shocked there are that many Swifties in Charlottesville, Alamo County. The second thing that stood out to me, I'm shocked there are that, that many Swifties that are willing to travel across the pond, not the E. coli-ridden Lake Anna, but instead the Atlantic Ocean to follow Taylor Swift on tour.
Yeah.
Perhaps we should have seen this. Is this in a lot of ways some kind of anthropology or sociological study? Charlottesville, Alamo County, wealthy, homogeneous in its look, teeny boppers, Gen Z'ers with money, loving Taylor, hopping on a jet plane out of, across the pond to see the billionaire, maybe the most impactful musician? This is crazy to say. Is Taylor Swift the most impactful musician in music history from an economy standpoint?
Quite possibly.
From, I, I'm not saying the best musician.
Right, right.
Don't hold me, don't say that. I'm not saying she has the impact of The Beatles or Michael Jackson when it comes to musical genre changes. I'm talking strictly Taylor Swift on tour when she goes to concert in your town or in your area, the impact she has on the economies of those areas. She revolution, she, when the National Football League, the NFL, as she's dating Travis Kelsey, she made the Kansas City Chiefs must-see TV just by being in the press box and drove ratings for the NFL to levels they'd never seen before.
Yeah.
Are we, can, here's another question for you with Taylor Swift. Are we looking at the most influential person in the world?
I don't know about that.
No. Tell me one who's more influential than Taylor Swift in the world right now. Viewers and listeners, give me a more influential person in the world right now. What are you gonna say? Uh, Putin? You're gonna say Sleepy Joe Biden? You're gonna see, uh, shady, shady Donald Trump? You're gonna say the, uh, dictator, uh, Putin and Russia? Who, who is more influential in the world right now than Taylor Swift? I, I'm sincerely asking that question. Anyone? Give me someone who is more influential in the world right now than Taylor Swift. I'm listening to learn.
I'm waiting for the answer, too.
No, like, who would you say?
I don't know who I would say. Uh, but I'm, you're saying most influential in any area whatsoever? Uh, she may drive money, but I wouldn't, don't know if I'd call her influential.
What?
What is she influencing?
Women watching the NFL at levels they've never watched before.
Yeah.
Ratings for the NFL like it's never seen before. Money to the NFL like it's never seen before. Alamo County and Charlottesville, Charlottesvilleian, uh, Swifties at record clips going across the Atlantic Ocean and gobbling up Airbnbs as if they're Skittles or gobstoppers. She influences fashion. She drives economies for localities depending on where she's touring at. She's turned a, a, a tight end into a household name. Trav, who's, who's her, who's her, who's her boo? Judah?
Uh, Travis Kelsey.
Look at what I'm saying. Judah, do you, name one other NFL football player?
Oh, come on.
Okay, no, seriously, watch this. I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. Name a single other active NFL football player right now.
Roethlisberger?
Ben Roethlisberger has been retired for years.
Oh.
The quarterback of the Pittsburgh Steelers. Judah Wickauer, name one other NFL football player that's active right now.
Oh, man.
He's making my point for me. The only NFL football player.
You mentioned his name earlier.
No, you knew. The only NFL football player Judah knows in the entire world is the guy that's boning Taylor Swift. Think about that. The only one. Give me one, anyone. Anyone that's more influential in the world right now than Taylor Swift. Who would you, would you say is Biden?
Possibly. I mean.
Isn't the fir, is the first debate tonight? Is the first Biden-Trump debate tonight?
Is it? They're actually having the debate? Wow.
Can you look that up? Stephanie Wells Road says, there's not a single person more influential than Taylor Swift in the world. She is a powerhouse.
Well, there you go.
I mean, she's a behemoth. All right, I don't wanna spend too much time on the Swifties. Give the stat again for their cocktail parties.
Give the stat again for what?
Their cocktail parties this weekend about the Swifties.
What cocktail parties are you talking about?
The Swifties from Charlottesville and Alamo County, traveling to Europe. Give the stat again, if you could, please, sir.
Uh, Crozet.
For the cocktail parties this weekend, some conversation fodder.
Crozet is number one. And, uh, and Charlottesville is number six in, in, uh, in Airbnbs in Europe right now.
That's bananas.
Yeah.
That is bananas. Deep Throat, I can tell you that in the economic research I get, there have been many mentions of how Taylor Swift's tour causes distortions in GDP statistics. That's how big it is.
Hmm.
All right, next headline, if you could.
Kit Ashy.
Oh, Kit. This, I'm excited for this one. Kit, I, I hope Kit hears this. Is Kit watching the program right now? Kit Ashy owns Monsoon. Kit Ashy owns Pineapples Thai Kitchen next to Cardinal Hall. Monsoon is, of course, on Market Street. That's my wife's favorite Thai restaurant. Kit Ashy owns Maple Pine Breakfast and Thai Kitchen on Pantom's and Coconut Thai Kitchen in Crozet. She is now opening Tangerine's in the Mill Creek Shopping Center. Judah had a glimpse on Tangerine's Kitchen, the Mill Creek Shopping Center while working here. One of the things I very much appreciate with you is you see a lot of deal flow in this office and you are a vault with what you hear and you see and what you read. I very much appreciate that. Yeah, I'll put some contracts. What's that?
Who would I tell?
I don't know who you talked to outside the office. Uh, you know, put some contracts together. We did the business brokerage of this deal, helped her secure the, uh, space. I think Tangerine's Kitchen in the Mill Creek Shopping Center, the Food Line Shopping Center down Avon Extended is gonna be a massive success story. She is taking over the old Crowby's location. And the Mill Creek Shopping Center, when we said, hey, Kit, this opportunity exists, I think it would be great. It's an untapped market. You got density, housing, you got affluence, you got a captive market, and you don't have a lot of options. You don't have a lot of other restaurant providers, few delivery services down there. What she does, quality food at fair prices, served hot with a smile. What she does, quality food at fair prices, served hot with a smile, is clearly successful. She is going to do extremely well. She's also going to open a coffee shop and bakery in the old Mill Creek location as well. The old Millie Joe's location. It's going to be a massive success. And at the end of this year, Kit is going to have six restaurants. And she's doing it the right way where she's taking team members from her restaurants that she's impressed with their work ethic. You have that lower third on screen?
Yep.
And she says, I want you to stop working for me and I want you instead to work alongside me as my partner.
Yeah.
It is brilliant. And when you bring a team member and you promote them from employee to partner, they will be committed to the model at levels that go beyond a nine to five or clocking in or clocking out or working just for a paycheck.
Yeah.
So kudos to Kit Ashi. Cannot wait to see what happens with Tangerine's. We will be there to support her. My family and I and our boys can't wait to see, see what she does with the Millie Joe's location with that coffee shop and bakery. I think she's going to have six incredibly successful locations. Ginny Who says, I'm so excited for Tangerine's to open. She has what? Lake Renovia, Mill Creek. What's the other one? Is it Fox Chase or Foxcroft down there? She's got the Fifth Street Extended, uh, side with, uh, Redfields and with Mosby Mountain. Uh, the new stuff that PHA is doing, Piedmont Housing Alliance is doing, where I got some friends that are moving into those new, new houses. It is a captive market with very few options that's committed to supporting local.
Yeah.
Props. Next headline, if you could. Roots. Oh.
Roots?
This is, this is fodder for your cocktail party. Remember we're off next, we're off tomorrow. Roots Natural Kitchen, which was launched by two UVA grads. Two UVA grads launched this restaurant. Interestingly, they looked to rent from me in this building, one of our holdings years ago as kind of like a corporate office. The two University of Virginia graduates that own Roots are expanding the Roots brand to what is now going to be the third Richmond area Roots location. They're going to open in Chesterfield. This will be the third Richmond area location. This brand, Roots Natural Kitchen, launched in Charlottesville, Virginia. Roots opened years ago in Charlottesville in 2015. They now have 13 locations, soon to be 14. Roots very well could be natural kitchen, and I say this without exaggeration or hyperbole. The most successful Charlottesville birthed restaurant in the history of the city.
Yeah.
Give me another restaurant brand that was birthed in Charlottesville that has 14 locations.
I know.
No, seriously.
Fairfax, Maryland, North Carolina, Ohio, Pennsylvania.
Delaware. Alberto Naman and Alvaro Ansbach are the owners and founders of Roots, their first spot in Charlottesville in 2015 on the UVA corner. They sell salad bowls that run 12 to like 16 or $17 and they're made fresh. Give me a Charlottesville brand. A Charlottesville restaurant brand that has 14 locations. Can't think of a single one. You may be looking at the most successful restaurant ever birthed in Charlottesville history right here.
Yeah.
That's bananas. Well done. Um, and what's the last headline? Oh, we got two more. We got Ryan Dunn to Phoenix.
Yeah.
I want to save the Bel Air Breakfast Biscuits for last.
All right.
You got the Ryan Dunn headline on screen? Thank you, Judah. Ryan Dunn, the Virginia swing man can jump out of the gym. He's got like a seven foot plus reach. He's a defensive stopper. He's got a nose for the basketball. He can rebound. He can shot block. He definitely has to work on his shooting. He can score around the rim. He can dunk the basketball. He's fantastic on tippens, but from a jump shot standpoint, he needs work. Regardless, Ryan Dunn was selected by the Denver Nuggets in the first round, the draft last night, the 28th overall pick. Ryan Dunn was selected by the Denver Nuggets and is expected to be traded to the Phoenix Suns. This is the 10th Virginia player selected in the NBA draft since 2012. He joins Mike Scott, who was drafted in 2012, Joe Harris, 2014, Justin Anderson, 2015, Malcolm Brogdon, 2016, Devin Hall, 2018, Deandre Hunter, 2019, Ty Jerome, 2019, Kyle Guy, 2019, and Trey Murphy III in 2021. Hunter, Anderson, Jerome and Murphy were first round selections, while Scott, Harris, Brogdon, Hall and Guy were second round picks. Ryan Dunn is the 12th UVA player selected in the first round of the NBA draft, joining Barry Parkhill, Wally Walker, Jeff Lamp, Ralph Sampson, Olden Polynice, Brian Stith, Corey Alexander, Justin Anderson, Deandre Hunter, Ty Jerome and Trey Murphy III. I want to say this. Tony Bennett, Virginia basketball coach, has 10 players picked in the NBA draft since he's come to school here as the coach, 10 from TB himself. Props to Coach Bennett. That man's name needs to be on the court. And we're going to close with Bel Air Breakfast Biscuits. This is a new find for me as we move to the Ivy side of town from Keswick. Driving by Bel Air Market even more. Judah. They're savory.
Hmm.
They're delicious. They're warm. There's a fried chicken one. There's a bacon, egg and cheese one. There's a bacon biscuit, the personal favorite of our oldest son. There's a sausage biscuit, a sausage, egg and cheese, a sweet ham with cheese. These biscuits.
And they're all on buttermilk biscuits?
Are on buttermilk biscuits. They sell out quickly and they range from $2.29 to $2.89. We got three breakfast biscuits, one for me, a fried chicken and egg. One for my wife, a fried chicken, and one for our son, oldest, bacon biscuit. Our 19-month-old turned 19 months today. He struggles to eat the breakfast biscuits, probably because he doesn't have any teeth or has very limited teeth capacity. So instead he just makes the loudest, most awful noise while pointing at his older brother demanding the bacon biscuit in his hand, while my wife and I are tearing our hairs, our hair out, clawing our eyeballs as we listen to our 19-month-old in the backseat making what is akin to fingernails screeching, scraping, clawing a chalkboard. Yes, parent life is not always easy. My point is this, three biscuits for $9. Three biscuits for $9. Chick-fil-A can't match that. McDonald's can't match that. Who can match three biscuits for $9 that are damn good, that you can eat on the fly? The Suttons have done a remarkable job with the elevated gourmet to-go cuisine at Bel Air Market and there are many market locations around town. Is it the best kept secret in town? Probably not. Others obviously know about it because they sell it immediately. But I want to highlight it for you, Judah Wickauer, because I know one thing that makes you smile like a Cheshire cat with Ritz crackers and a tin of cheese whiz.
Brunch?
Food. You love food.
I guess. I do love food. Who doesn't love food?
I know you love food. I've seen you gobble and scarf down food. You know what your favorite kind of food is?
Do I?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure I do know.
What's your favorite kind of food?
Oh, I thought you were going to tell me.
What's your favorite kind of food? I know what your favorite kind of food is.
Uh, my favorite kind of food is Mexican.
Your favorite kind of food is free food.
Oh, that's, that's a little harsh.
That's not harsh. You know, that's true.
Who doesn't love free food?
Try the breakfast biscuits, $2.59. You'll love it. It's the best breakfast biscuit I've had in a very long time, especially at that price. All right. That's Thursday edition of the show.
Are breakfast biscuits a, a southern thing?
No.
No?
Are breakfast biscuits a southern thing?
I don't know. I'm just, uh, I don't remember seeing, I, I remember, I, I've seen breakfast.
Breakfast biscuits a southern?
I've seen breakfast sandwiches in a variety of, uh, of looks and.
They have bread in the north.
I know.
They have eggs in the more, in the north.
Specifically, no, it's the biscuit part that.
They have biscuits in the north.
They've got biscuits everywhere. That doesn't mean that, uh, breakfast biscuits are like sold on every street corner. I was just curious. Uh, I see breakfast biscuits all over the place, um, in the south.
All right. That's the show. You, you were fantastic today.
Thank you.
Friday edition of the I Love Seville Show, Judah Wickauer, Jerry Miller. Judah Wickauer was on fire today. He carried the program. We're off tomorrow, but real talk with Keith Smith at 10:15 AM with a pretty talented round table. So long, everybody, and thank you for joining us.